Welcome to the Bossier City Council Special Meeting, 3:00 PM, Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. We have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Timothy Larkin. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us here in Bossier City today. Lord, we thank you for all of the success that Bossier City had during the past week, during the ice storm. We thank you, Lord, for all of the employees who contributed to this successful operation of the city during that time of stress. Lord, we especially pray for the firemen and police who suffered injury while protecting the safety of residents during that storm. We pray for their speedy recovery, Lord. Lord, we pray for a quick eradication of COVID-19, for a successful vaccine rollout. Lord, we pray for those who have suffered illness, for those who have lost loved ones, and we pray for those that are suffering financially. Lord, we pray for our nation, we pray for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin. Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
And Mr. Harvey is at. Council, in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 4219 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet social distancing guidelines and meeting requirements, some Bossier City council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If anyone is uncomfortable in coming to this meeting, they are welcome to call 318-549-4595 at this time for public comments on any agenda item, in accordance with recently passed Act 302. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item, in accordance with adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer session and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please, no foul language, or the call will be disconnected, and you will forfeit your right to speak. I started it early.
You did? Should we wait a little bit?
We can wait a few more seconds. Councilman, there are no public virtual comments.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2021, regular meeting and dispense with the reading?
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby? Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, councilman, there are no additions or deletions from the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve today's agenda.
Second.
Any questions from the audience?
Did it come up that time?
What's that?
I was, it still didn't come up, Mr. Darby?
It did come up, though.
Okay, you may have to refresh your screen, because I show you on there. Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Irwin, did yours come up?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll give Mr. Darby a minute to refresh his screen.
David, I don't see, yours just popped up.
I didn't vote.
It says somewhere.
Motion carries. At this time, we have ceremonial matters and recognition of guests.
Like to have Mr. Ben Roshenbach, who is our city engineer, and also heads up to our water and sewer department.
Thank you, Council President Montgomery, Mayor. Just had a few things to say about this past week, just in respect for what the city's done for us and what these fine gentlemen in this room, just a fraction of them, have been doing the last week. For the better part of two decades, the Bossier City Mayor and Council have had the foresight to prepare Bossier for unprecedented growth and extreme circumstances. Doubtful he's ever included pandemics and arctic weather. Regardless, the God-given intuition of our city leaders knew that preparations were in order. Your unprecedented actions, your experienced leadership, your heart, and your passion for Bossier City has led the way to extreme gains both in financial responsibility and enhanced infrastructure. In 2012, you initiated an extraordinary $150 million investment into Bossier's public utility system, including a new state-of-the-art $70 million water treatment facility expansion and an $80 million wastewater treatment facility that completely replaced outdated, antiquated, and aging infrastructure. These assets are the heart of an ongoing campaign to make a stronger and better Bossier City, in concert with the expansion and improvement of Bossier's treatment facilities. Nearly $50 million has been invested into the expansion and improvement of Bossier's water distribution system and wastewater collection system. In the absence of these improvements, providing utility service to over 80,000 people through these extreme and prolonged temperatures would have been impossible. Your unwavering support has provided the resources necessary to maintain and operate the utility system in environments never imaginable. The dedicated City of Bossier City response crews were well-equipped with the necessary gear and information technology that allowed for an organized response to this emergency. Additionally, unified support from Bossier's Fire and Police Department has allowed the city to respond to approximately 1,500 emergency calls for assistance. With their support, combined with the network of local, dedicated, and passionate construction talent in this fine city, we held our ground. In a time of great need, hundreds of city workers and local support worked tirelessly, many pushing 40 hours a day, at times without food, and unprecedented logistical challenges to maintain the heartbeat and lifeblood of our community. Specifically, I would like to thank the mayor, our Bossier City Council President, David Montgomery Jr., and the city council for always taking extreme action to ensure the community is protected and that personnel are well-equipped to handle whatever comes our way. The Fire and Police Department for always rising to the challenge and to the various divisions of the Public Utility Department, Engineering Department, Customer Service Department, Permits and Inspections, Building and Grounds, Fleet Maintenance, IT, Public Works, and Administration, and all the other departments that played an important role in responding to this effort. Specifically, I would like to thank those that I have personally been working with over the last week in response to this effort. These include the Fire Department, specifically Bossier's Fire Chief Brad Zagone, Steve Pennell, the Deputy Chief of Operations, and Dwayne Elliott, Chief of Special Operations. They were out turning water off anywhere and everywhere they could find water to turn off, and when they couldn't find the meter, they'd call us. The Police Department, specifically Chief of Police Shane McWilliams. The roads were challenging at best, and if you were out, you saw just about every intersection, there was a police officer there trying to get people off the road so that we could do our job. The City Administration, Pam Glorioso, for keeping everybody in the loop. For the Water Treatment Facility, Our Heart, Jeremiah Williams, our plant superintendent, Brian Moore, our plant assistant superintendent, and I don't know if he's here today, is he here? Do what, he's sleeping? We affectionately call him the Wizard now, because anything and everything we asked him to do to that water treatment facility, he just said, "Yes, sir, I'll do it," and he did. Scott Reed, Senior Water Plant Operator, Dennis Means, a Senior Water Plant Operator, Alan Jenkins, Greg Freshour, John Townsend, all senior water plant operators, Jackie Davis, Nathan Barnett, and Charles Pruitt, water plant operators, worked tirelessly to make sure that the heart of keeping water was protected. The Water and Sewer Maintenance Division, Lloyd Atkins, Assistant Superintendent, Kenneth Swett, Foreman, Corey Leonard, Foreman, Aaron Carey, he's a Foreman, Lemroyne Brown, Foreman, Emmett Lewis, Ronnie Efferson, Jonathan Richardson. You know, fixing water mains is kind of unglorious work in the best of conditions, but when it's sub-zero, trying to pick the guy that gets to get in the hole to fix the water main is difficult at best. The Lift Station Division, to their credit, in this storm, they only lost two pumps out of more than 250 pumps. They were on it every day, all day. Chris Labrie, our new Assistant Superintendent, was commanding that group along with Andre, Germany, Damian, DeKalb DeKalb, Derek Council, and James Cooper. The wastewater treatment facility operated with significant flows in conditions with very minor damage to Bossier's water treatment facilities. We talked a lot about people running their faucets, all that water had to go somewhere, and it went to our wastewater treatment plants. Sean Barton, our Superintendent, William Matthews, Assistant Superintendent over the Northeast Plant, Shannon Sparks, our Assistant Superintendent over Maintenance, Kelly Covington, Danny Skinner, Jimmy Moore, all wastewater operators, Tyler Neusebaum, Bryce Stanhope, and Rhonda Lovewell, all working through these conditions to keep things running. Customer service was very instrumental. We worked with Judy Vetketter, the Director, and Cornelius, AKA Skillet Rogers, in helping us figure out where these meters were that were having abnormal flow, because a lot of people weren't home, or they're in military, and they didn't know their houses were running full. So that technology proved invaluable to getting people shut off and keeping water in our pipe. Our IT Department, something that we learned real quick, you know, you're required by law to call in utility locates when you dig. Well, they weren't out and about locating utilities, so we called on Bill Bell to help us find city fiber optics and things like that, to make sure we didn't damage anything while we were digging. Building maintenance and permits, specifically Rodney Taylor, physically with his own personal truck, took wastewater operators to and from our plant. He shoveled snow off buildings out there to make sure they didn't cave in, things like that. Public Works, Dale Keeler, helped to mitigate some hazardous situations we were dealing with. But in addition to all the City of Bossier staff, there were several private companies that came to Bossier's aid. You know, given the scale and scope of this event, every community in our region was looking for help. However, our private staff stayed here and fought the battle alongside city personnel. Pulley Construction, Thomas Pulley, President, and his project manager, Garth, and all his crew, they were out there 24/7 every day alongside us, making sure that the water was flowing. Axis Construction, including Mr. Brian Koffer, President, and all his crew, they were here as well. Utiliserv, Mr. Zach Raely, the President, and his crew, Kevin Johnson and Landon, who I believe are here, and their many qualified technicians were working with us hand-in-hand. We had Sage Pump Service, who provided some pumps during this effort. And last but not least, my crew, Mr. John Armstrong, he's our Lift Station Division Manager, and besides keeping all our lift stations operational, he personally ensured that myself and some of my staff had transportation to and from work, because not everybody has a four-by-four truck. Brian Radford, our Water and Sewer Maintenance Division, combined with Zach Grambling, our Foreman, they were working hand-in-hand with the Maintenance Division to fix freezing cold water mains, day in and day out. Darren Fortenberry, our Water Treatment Plant Division, unfortunately is not a Bossier resident, so he's trying to take care of his elderly family across the river, doesn't have water, but he's still made it here to help us in this battle. Gordon Garcia, in a similar situation, is our Director of Special Projects over the Water Treatment Division, was helping as he could remotely. Rick Dowdall, one of our wastewater treatment operators, spent more than 24 hours at the wastewater plant helping. Chandler Warren answered the phone nonstop for three days. Todd Thompson coordinated every repair that we did, and Clinton Patrick put some of Bossier's technology into hyperdrive so that we could figure out where all these things were happening and coordinate appropriately. Man, I'm sure I've missed many others, but I just want to thank you again for all of the support you've provided, not just with this emergency, but with every emergency we fight. They all have unique personalities. I tell my guys to plan for the, expect the unexpected, shall we say, because at some point, the plan goes out the window, and you have to start calling audibles. And we appreciate you trusting us to make those decisions for the city. So, President Montgomery, Mayor, thank you very much.
Well, sir. I don't have much to add to that, Mr. Roshenbach, but there's a reason that everybody's here today. I think we wanted to make a special note, too, that Mr. Nick Ferlita and Mr. Dwayne Elliott took it upon themselves to go to various hospital entrances, as well as all the fire and EMS entries and exit ways, and cleared those off so that our first responders could make their way to help all the citizens of Bossier City. So let me just tell you, the reason all of you are here today. You've accomplished a Herculean task, and you have so much to be proud of. There's nobody in the state of Louisiana that's done what you've all done, and don't let anybody tell you any different. And I'm going to stand up and applaud. We're proud of you, and we're going to keep on, and we're going to show the rest of the country what we're all made of and continue along this path. So thank you all very much, thank you for coming, and believe me, we appreciate everything each of you do in your lives in protecting this city and providing the services that our citizens have come to expect. Thank you again.
Unfinished business. Adopt and ordnance appropriating $400,000 from the 2021 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase five structures and power loaders and other necessary medical supplies, final reading.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? And y'all are welcome to leave if you'd like. We'll give you a minute.
Mr. Darby, is it popping up? Okay.
All right, any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt and ordinance to fund replacement of Bruce Street Forest Main at a cost of $95,000 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund, final reading.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business, adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading. Petitioner Lacey Galligan, Gitcracking B.C. LLC. Location, Another Broken Egg, 3107 Airline Drive, Suite 400, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high- and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Council, these next four ordinances, if they are introduced today, due to advertising requirements, they won't be on next week's meeting, but they will be on the March 16th meeting. I've spoken to the department heads about that. First item is introduce an ordinance to reappropriate $250,000 from the sales tax capital improvements funds to the 2021 street and drainage repair project, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $1,200,000 in surplus funds from the Ordinance 48 of 2019 and Ordinance 147 of 2019 towards additional improvements at city recreational areas, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bossier City and the Veterans Affairs, first reading.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to fund the water line relocation at Green Acres Office Park in preparation for the Walter Obigby Carriage Way Phase 2 at a cost of $600,000 to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to amend Resolution Number 106 of 2020 and change the name of Brookshire Grocery Arena Drive to Brookshire Arena Drive, first and final reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve report of reconciliation for the police building and public service complex lighting project, Ordinance Number 73 of 2020, with a decrease in project cost of $25,000, first and final reading.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Sure.
Adopt a resolution to approve report of reconciliation for the police building and public service complex lighting project, Ordinance Number 73 of 2020, with a decrease in project cost of $25,000, first and final reading.
And may I remind the audience, if you would like to speak, if you would please come to the mic and state your name and address for the record. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve report of reconciliation for the animal control building improvement project, Ordinance Number 33 of 2019, with a decrease in project cost of $10,000, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Under Reports, Mr. Ben Roshenbach, City Engineer for the Monthly Project Report.
I'll try my best to keep this brief.
There you go.
This is our standard monthly update for the city council on our engineering department projects, and at the end, I'll give a little overview of where we are with the Bossier City water system. Just real quick, over $147 million in ongoing design and construction projects. $77 million of those are currently under construction. Nine projects are in design or bid phase. Seventeen projects are under construction. Seven subdivisions are in or nearing the construction phase. Walter Obigby Carriage Way, Phase 1, is open.
Do I need to come forward and say my name?
Yes. What are you speaking on, sir?
I had a question. I just wanted to-
Are you speaking on something that we're speaking to right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. My name-
Normally, we don't interrupt the report being given until it's after-
Yes, sir. Just, I wanted to go, you know, I want to stay within your rules. My name, Tyreus Venus, my address, 124 Loop Street. I'm in District 5. My councilman's not here. The question was, I wanted to see if we could go back to the last slide. He was going through so fast, and I was trying to take notes on it, and I didn't want to raise my hand and ask him to go back without coming forward, and-
Could we provide him a copy of the-
Absolutely.
We'll provide you an entire copy of the report following the meeting, or right now, here.
I don't have one there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
The Carriage Way is currently open. We're working on a few little punchless items there, but that project is shaping up real nice. Take some time to go out there and check that out. Swan Lake Road, all ramps are currently open. Project is approximately 86% complete. They're a little ahead of schedule, and hopefully with some sunshine and drier weather, they'll get that project done. The Melrose Drive Extension, contractor started out there. That project's about 15% complete. Coleman Street, a lot of activity going on over there. That's the project back behind Bossier High School. They're on target to finish on time.
Venus, just, how much longer is it going to be on the drainage?
Probably, probably, I don't know exact date. We can get with the contractor and give you-
Before they move on to, you know-
Yeah, some more context to that, but they're going to want to get everything below grade done before they start doing any of the major paving and things like that out there.
Yeah, some more context to that, but they're going to want to get everything below grade done before they start doing any of the major paving and things like that out there. And they've been moving.
Yeah, I've been going down there.
Yeah, they've been moving. The Streetscape project there on Highway 71 South is moving along, about 34% complete. 10% of the time has elapsed there, so they're making good headway. The Bossier City Fire Department burned building, good picture there. I'd say they're 90% complete with that. Probably just minor items left to punch out on that project. Animal Control Facility, they were looking to be complete at the end of this month, but they lost last week. So, we expect that to be pushed to early March. Spent some time over there, it's pretty sharp looking on the inside. They're coming along. Hopefully, we won't have any other delays due to uncontrollable events. Tinsley Athletic Ball Fields, these are some fresh pictures. You can see the main pavilion there coming up out of the ground, also the batting cages and the new infield there with turf on them. The Brookshire Grocery Arena, the original scope of that project is complete. They're now working on a, a contract amendment to do some additional work out in the parking lot. Field of Dreams restroom, they're basically complete out there, less some minor tweaks and, and adjustments. Looks excellent out there. The citywide street improvements, all of this weather has kind of given us a little hiccup. We've got the Phase One and Phase Two to be bid on March 2nd. We were supposed to open bids last week on Phase One. Private Development, starting to see-
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the street improvements, I want to emphasize the fact that this is normally done on an annually, annual basis. We've been in the past spending $1 million a year citywide. We recognized the need that we needed to apply more funds. So, we've got a five-year, $15 million project. So essentially, we've tripled the annual funding to address all these needs throughout the entire city. So, it's normal maintenance done on an annual basis. We've just increased the funding because it's become available and we've recognized that. And so, for the next five years, we'll pledge the $3 million a year to accelerate the street and sidewalk improvements throughout the city. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Private Development, we're starting to see that pick up quite dramatically with low interest rate loans and, and a shortage of housing in our community. Projects out to bid are in design. We have this Highway 71 lighting project, Phase Two. Comments have been sent to the designer for implementation on that. We're close to getting that one on the streets. The East Bank Fire Station, some design efforts on that are underway. Clifford Almond Park restroom, that's a new restroom out at Clifford Almond Park. The design on that is nearing completion. We've got a South Bossier Miscellaneous Capital Improvement Project that's in design. And then we're working on a Highway 71 South left turn lane at Golden Meadows Subdivision. We're in the early stages of study and design on that project. Any questions on that before I get into a kind of a breakdown of the last week?
Just speaking to that intersection at Golden Meadows Subdivision and Highway 71, improving that entire intersection, you want to go into a little detail about-
Yeah, the plan is to add a left turn lane in that section as you're going north so that you can get in a left turn lane and turn there at Golden Meadows. So, we've got signaling issues, permitting issues, things like that. You have to work with DOTD, that's in their corridor, so we just have to-
But it's definitely going to improve the traffic flow through that area.
Yeah, residents there have complained that it's dangerous because, yeah, just take for instance, when school lets out and children are going north on 71. When they want to turn west at that light, they're stacking up on Highway 71. So, that's what give them a safe place to stack so they don't get rear ended. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. So, some of these items, the mayor touched on yesterday. Thank you for doing that. Just brought a little color today with some pictures and just update on some of those statistics for where we are yesterday, today. Kind of interesting picture there. That is a very insulated water pipe on our water treatment plant. You can see it completely broke off the side of that wall. Just things you don't normally expect to see. But since 9:00 AM on the 15th, Bossier's been working to maintain water system pressure. We found that that added water usage required, we found that added water usage for preventative maintenance measures at people's houses to keep your pipes from freezing, along with service line breaks that froze and a handful of water main breaks increased our demand by more than 150%. And to meet that increased demand, Bossier City treated more than 30 million gallons a day to supply water to over 80,000 people. Normally, we treat about 11. Bossier City estimates that we cut off somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,500 customers throughout that period, both with the fire department's help, police and, and our staff to make sure that as much water that was on the ground was shut off and that people didn't have a lot of damage to their homes and their properties. You know, the highway interstate conditions required intense coordination for critical resources necessary to maintain operations. Bossier City, we use what we call our AMR technology. We talked about that briefly, but that was a huge help in being proactive in identifying where these big water users were so that we could get them much needed help. The screen you see here, that's from today. And you can see all these blue lines. These are our four elevated water towers. These are the clear wells that sit out at the water treatment plant. And other than those, all these just kind of hovered around here for over a week. We've never seen that. But this was a screen we have out at the water plant that we were monitoring, monitoring 24/7 and taking data off every 30 minutes. We worked with the surrounding water systems, specifically those that are tied to Bossier's system. That includes Towne Benton, Cypress Black Bayou and Country Place. You know, and since probably, well, not since, but since 7:00 PM on the 20th, we had sustained system pressures in excess of 30 PSI. I know I'm an engineer, so just let me geek out for a minute. All right? So, Clinton, our Assistant City Engineer, helped us start plotting some of this so we could quickly and easily visually see where our problems were and how we were gaining or losing this battle. And these are our clear well depths. This was our, you know, blood in the tank, if you will, at the water treatment plant. Here's where we started a little after. These are, this, this green line here was our system pressure leaving the water plant. And these are our pressures out at our various monitoring sites, the elevated tanks. And so, you can see, we were kind of fluctuating up and down and started to gain ground. And this period right here is right when we started providing water to Barksdale. So, we felt like at that point, we were, we, we had gained enough water in our system to begin filling their system and monitored that real closely for about 24 hours. And then, starting yesterday, we basically indicated to them, whatever they needed to do, we were in good shape. And you can just see everything sort of normalized through, through yesterday evening into early yesterday morning, or the day before evening, early yesterday morning. So, this was helpful for us. We were doing this to really understand better what was going on in the system. Picture in the background, that's a water filling truck. Since 11:00 AM Sunday with consistent gains, we talked about that. We began providing water at Barksdale River Force Base. As of 3:00 o'clock today, Bossier City supplied nearly 6 million gallons of water to Barksdale. Right before I came in, I got a text from them and they, they indicated that their operations were completely normal now. Bossier City began distributing bottled water to those in need on Sunday. And since 9:00 PM Sunday evening, with continued strain on Shreveport's water system, we began to supply water to critical medical facilities in Shreveport via water trucks. And that's, that's again, a picture there. We estimate nearly 200,000 gallons as of right now. Little picture here of somebody having fun fixing an awfully cold water line. Bossier City is working with the LDH to coordinate the water sampling efforts. The local Louisiana Department of Health laboratory is in Shreveport. And that's normally where we would take all of our health samples to, but they don't have running water. So, they have coordinated with the Baton Rouge office. We collected 35 samples across the entire distribution system early this morning. And those are en route to Baton Rouge as we speak, probably already there. We are expecting the results from that analysis early afternoon tomorrow. Once we get clear water samples back, we will let the city know that we can rescind the, the boil advisory. And just for some gee whiz, here was one of the two pumps. That is a check valve that's basically solid ice. Normally, when you have sewer flowing through pipes, they don't freeze. That one froze solid. You know, when it's icy outside, you can't take a pickup truck and set up a generator. You literally have to get skid steers out there to make that happen. Here's another, you can kind of see the insulation on these lines right here by this fire hydrant. This is the water plant and they just laughed at that cold and burst. You can kind of see, this is late into the night, last night, we, we got pretty popular with the water haulers and they started to stack up out there. And then again, this is a Bossier City crew. I don't even want to think about how cold that is out there, getting that water main prepped and back in service. So, Lord willing, tomorrow, we'll, we'll get our clear bill of health and we'll be back to quote unquote "normal" emergencies after that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Ben, is that available in a printout form?
It's, it's in that.
Okay, it's in this package, too?
Yes, sir.
And I also have a copy of the PowerPoint and I'll be happy to forward it to anyone that requests it.
Yeah, would you make some copies and Brian, if you could get that distributed to the media? If you could forward it to him, please, Phyllis?
Yes, sir.
And that way, he can distribute it. I think that's awesome, the graphs and so forth, even though that's, whatever you call it, the engineering-
Yeah, geek.
Geek or something, I like it.
Water nerds, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, I like it. So, I think it tells a story and we're grateful for everything, again, that everyone's done through this snowpocalypse, as I've heard it referred to.
Yeah, yeah, snowdemic.
Ben, I'd like to, I'd like to personally thank you because I'm, because they seem like I was on the phone with you a lot during this time, you know? And I know you worked a lot of hours and wish you still answered my calls and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And this here was good because, you know, we, you know, we had some, some comments about our water, but people don't understand what, what you go through to, to get water out to them. And then, you know, Shreveport ran out, we supplied Barksdale, we pushed it up to Benton. So, I mean, I think overall, it was, it was a great job. I, I never ran out of water. Of course, pressure's going to go down, that's, that's normal. My pipes didn't freeze, so I guess I was a lucky one, but I think y'all did a whole job and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Williams.
And just one quick note, I've had a couple of councilmen that asked me to make note and I would like for you to state it for the record, that the two tanks that were painted to honor our veterans, our military, our troops, our first responders, police, fire EMS, was normal routine maintenance that we would have painted the tanks exactly where, as they were in the past. But we decided that we were going to honor-
Yes, sir.
Those people that take care of our lives every day. But it was normal routine maintenance that was necessary to ensure the quality of water and the stability of water, which had we not done that, could have severely impacted our delivery dur- during this storm. Is that a correct statement?
No question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For the record.
Any other questions? Thank y'all.
Mayor? Yes, sir. Y'all have a great week and enjoy the sunshine.